At this time? Is there a second?
Veronica Robertson, I second it.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll poll the board accordingly. The motion in second is to approve the proclamation for Lerue Evans as read. I'll start with Councilman Hines. Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Robertson?
Yes.
Councilman Moy?
Yes.
And Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. All votes are in favor of approving the proclamation for Lerue Evans.
Okay. Item number seven is a presentation on the New River Basin Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
We're turning that over to Brian. Oh, sorry, Brian. Bear with me, bear with me.
Be the one on the right.
Right here?
Yeah, the one.
And we're going to...
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
All right, so, good evening, council. Good to be with you guys tonight. If you guys will remember about five years ago, this month, we were going through the same process with the regional hazard mitigation plan. Back in the year 2004 and before, the state would allow multi-jurisdictional regional hazard mitigation plans, but in 2015, it shifted to a regional. So now, we're actually instead of going just county or municipality by municipality and county by county, we're actually going regions. We're actually, so the town of Winterville's in the New Basin, so we're in the New River Regional Basin. Hazard mitigation plan, that includes five counties and 31 jurisdictions. So, just going through a little bit. So, the first plan was approved under this concept, regional plan concept, back in June 2015. So, it's a regional plan effort where hazards are addressed, and specifically for each county and as a region as a whole. So, obviously, we're in eastern North Carolina. We know that one of our biggest hazard from, that we deal with is flooding, hurricanes. So, the plan really is heavy on that. You can see there's our jurisdictions. They're included in the plan, Pitt County, Jones County, Lenore, Wayne, and Green. And that includes all the municipalities within those counties. So, hazard mitigation defined by FEMA just means any sustained action taken to reduce or eliminate the long-term risk to life and property from a hazard event. Primarily here, we're going to be looking at, those mitigation efforts are going to be just flood requirements. So, anytime we're building in the floodplain, making sure that the construction is done in a way that would, you know, limit the loss of property and life in that floodplain. So, what's changed from the last one to now? FEMA mandates that we update this plan every five years. So, basically, what this is doing is just updating existing planning efforts. It increases public education awareness, maintains grant eligibility, which is the big thing. We want to make sure in the event of a natural disaster, we're able to go out and get those funds from FEMA in the state of North Carolina. And again, those funds primarily here would be for acquisition of repetitive loss properties. So, and it also identifies and outlines strategies within the regions. So, you can see there's a whole slew of things what's changed in the plan. I'll read a couple of them, but I won't get too heavy on it. But it considers changes in vulnerability due to action implementation. That hasn't changed much. We're still vulnerable to hurricanes and floods. So, gives us, gives some success stories. It gives us areas where mitigations weren't effective. Gives us new hazards that may arise. Primarily, that's heavy on climate change. Incorporates new data, studies on hazards and capabilities. And then, obviously, we want to make sure we're acknowledging growth and development within the floodplain. You go to the next slide, Terry. So, just for the requirements, so the code of federal regulations does require the communities maintain and update their hazard mitigation plans every five years. This is a pretty big task for a regional plan with 31 jurisdictions. So, there's a lot of coordination getting everybody done. So, that's on our part. We have to actually approve and adopt the plan. So, that way, it gives us that eligibility. So, any federally declared disaster in North Carolina means that the county and municipal jurisdictions in the basin will be eligible to apply for that funding. And having an updated plan ensures that the county and municipal jurisdictions will be ready to, with those mitigation project ideas. So, we've actually, we've got the plan. We know what we're going to do when it happens. And then, when we get the funding, we're able just to execute that plan. So, with that, I'll have, answer any questions you guys have.
Anyone have any questions? Anyone have any questions? Do we hear a motion? We approve this plan?
Moy would like to make a motion that we approve this recommendation, adopt this resolution.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Okay, I will poll the board. Councilman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Robertson?
Yes.
Councilman Moy?
Yes.
And Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Votes are all in favor to approve the plan as presented. Brian, does that give you what you need?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, I believe we're moving into the next item, which is also Brian's.
Okay, it's, excuse me, a public hearing on new business item eight. Oh, yeah, I see. Ainge Plaza lots 20 and 21, final plat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, as stated before, we're amending the agenda to put this one in front of the public hearing for the annexation. And the reason behind that is we have not created that lot 21 yet. Because of the pandemic situation in COVID-19, we weren't able to get that through planning board into you guys like we usually would. So, usually, that would be kind of a concurrent thing, where we would have the final plat approved before the annexation. But with time, and it just happened to be, these are on the same agenda, and doing one before the other just makes sense. So, with that, I'll go through just a short presentation on the, it's not working again, Terry. So, this is a final plat for Ainge Plaza lots 20 and 21. This is on Beacon Drive. This is right across from the Aqua Venture. You can see the parcel number there. It's two, two and a half acres. Zoning is general business. Next one, Terry. So, there's that in the outline there, in the blue outline. See if we can't get this thing to work.
Ready?
And you see, there's the final plat overlaid on it. But with that, that's all I have. And I'll take any questions on this final plat if you guys have any.
Brian, got one question. Oh, we're going to have a sidewalk in front of that.
Yes, sir. So, you'll notice on that side of the road, on our site plan development, when we get the site plans in, that'll be one of the requirements. And if you, if you guys notice out there now, Pool Pro is being developed. They're actually having a sidewalk, so we're going to get some interconnection on that side. Yes, sir.
But we won't go no further than what is required at this time. We're not going to do the whole...
Yeah, it'll be individual developers. When they come in and develop the site, that'll be a requirement put on them. Yes, sir.
Okay.
They will, as I understand it, will install sidewalks?
Yes, sir. That's correct. And that'll be part of our site plans submitted. When they actually give a site plan, that'll be one of the requirements we show on it. So, when we give them the go-ahead, to go ahead and start moving dirt out there and putting that site in place, that'll be one of the conditions on the approval.
Now, is this only going to be on just on the, on the north, on the north side of Beacon? When they develop, would it also happen on the south side?
So, the south side is pretty much...
Don't have no sidewalks?
There are no sidewalks, but my, I guess my point was going to be, it's already developed out. So, and I think we've talked about this in the past, that when that development was done, there was some type of agreement that on that side, the interconnection with, and I don't have the exact agreement, but the interconnection with the access would negate having it on both sides. And I don't...
I think it predates me, Brian, but something to that sounds right. It's before my time, though.
Okay.
So, it's been longer than, way at 11 years ago.
But we are going to get sidewalks on that north side, so we'll have, we'll have some walkability out there for sure.
Great. Thank you.
One second.
This is a public hearing. Anyone?
Mayor, this is to actually approve the final plat for lots 20 and 21, Ainge Plaza. So, even though it's right at the public hearing, it's not part of the public hearing.
Okay, all right. So, we have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Mayor, I'll poll the board. Councilman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Robertson?
Yes.
Councilman Moy?
Yes.
And Councilman Smith?
Yes.
All in favor of approving the final plat for lots 20 and 21 at Ainge Plaza?
Okay. The next one is the Evergreen Construction Company re... I'm sorry, I skipped, I skipped Ainge Plaza 21 annexation.
Is that right, Brian?
Yep, we're on the annexation. All right. So, moving right along, so since we've got the actual lot created, now we can annex it. So, we got the lot 21 annexation.
There you go.
Now, now we're going back. So, exact same lot. There's your annexation map. So, you'll see the lot 21 to the left there. So, with that, ready for the public hearing? Or if you've got any questions, I feel free to answer. I'll be happy to answer any.
This, this is a public hearing. All, anyone that would, is in favor of this?
Don't we normally wait 24 hours after this meeting?
We, as, as previous with the budget public hearing, we solicited comments. Don't believe we received any prior to the start of the meeting, but we will take comments up to 24 hours after the conclusion of tonight's meeting. So, I believe there are two options, Keen, as to how the votes could go. Do you want to cover that? In terms of they could vote contingent upon any comments received?
That's correct. The guidance from the state is, since this is electronic meeting...
Keen, is your microphone on? Oh, okay. Talk as loud as you can.
The guidance from the state is that, once you have, since this is an electronic meeting, we have a 24-hour period, and the most late people have time to still add comments in. So, we'll wait that, we'll wait that 24 hours. And then, as far as the vote, you would either then vote at a later time after that 24 hours, or if tonight, you wanted to vote contingent upon that. I will say, the only thing is, if somebody has a comment that you hadn't thought about, you would be voting, not knowing what that comment is.
That wouldn't be very fair to the public, would it?
Well...
If you're not going to listen them first.
If, if, I think you have the option to vote contingent upon anything, but you certainly can wait and see what the comments that come in 24 hours later. And then, you would schedule, you would, I guess it would, well, you're not meeting in July.
We are not, but my recommendation would be that if we did receive comments that council would like to consider, we do receive them, that we schedule another meeting, maybe before the end of the month, for you all to then take action on those items if you are not comfortable voting on them this evening.
What, what is the reason?
Mayor, Councilman Hines has got a comment.
I'm sorry.
Put out there, if they wanted to have any comments, correct?
Correct.
Right. I mean, so, I mean, what's the issue? I mean, it was there, and it was posted that they could make any comments on it.
They would, people would have until 24 hours after the conclusion of tonight's meeting. So, I suppose that any comments that come in after tonight, we would need to get to you all and have you all consider the effect, if any, on any potential votes. That's just a thought.
Okay.
The question, the question I was going to ask, it's a request for a rezoning. What is the? I'm sorry, annexation.
That's, the public hearing is regarding the annexation of the lot. And you said, we've, we've got no public comment at this time?
We've received no comments currently.
Okay.
Which is typical with an annexation.
That's correct.
Typically, there's not going to be an issue that's going to be controversial.
Usually, it's not an adversarial thing. They've requested the annexation.
That's correct.
It's a voluntary annexation application.
Right. We don't anticipate any comments opposed to this particular item.
Are we going to go ahead and vote?
Mayor, that's up to you and the council.
I make a motion that we go ahead and talk about it.
Councilman Hines, is that a motion to approve?
Yes.
Oh, I guess we didn't complete the public hearing. Sorry. I got mired down in the, in the voting process. Mayor, we need to finish that public hearing.
I have a question. We have two additional people here tonight.
I don't believe anyone's here for that item.
Okay, but are they allowed to be in, everybody else has been zoned?
These are folks that are speaking at the next public hearing.
So, people could have came tonight and speak?
If you had, any speakers related to this project, not the public, but any speakers related to the project could be here this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so we have, anyone here that was in favor? And you say we had none?
We have no comments for or against.
For or against, okay. We'll close the public hearing. Watch the boards. Pleasure.
Councilman Hines, did you want to restate that motion?
I'd make a motion that we go ahead and approve it.
Motion to approve the annexation by Councilman Hines?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Mayor, I don't know if there's any discussion.
Well, I'd just like to say, for democracy to be at its best, the 24-hour period is worth that. One person might have a comment we don't know about. You never know. And this is, you're really treading on the democracy, the democratic system.
Councilman Smith, could you speak straight on? Thank you. Oh, maybe you're not cut on.
I think it's turned, I think it's timed out.
Oh.
Yeah, I think so.
Come on. I just can't imagine anybody really concerned about an annexation on Beacon. There are no homeowners anywhere close. I mean, this, this is not a rezoning. It's an annexation.
That's right. And staff...
I just can't imagine there being any concerns. That's just my take.
And I'm sure they signed up for all public services, which would be required.
I mean, there's nothing on that side of the road. There's, there's businesses across the street. There's nothing on their side.
But the sewer line runs in there.
Yeah, but I know that, but I'm saying, I can't imagine anybody having any concerns over this annexation.
It would be... It would be my recommendation, as long as we're doing electronic meeting, if we're going to vote during, before the end of the 24-hour period, that it would be contingent upon the, any further, you know, public comment coming in at 24-hour period.
Could you make an amendment to that? It said that if someone does make a comment, we come back. A comment is viable, comment, come back.
Certainly, we can, you can choose to recess tonight's meeting if you want to see if any comments come in. I can certainly reach out to council. You can schedule something really quickly. I mean, the option is definitely there. And just a reminder, this whole 24-hour period after the, after the closure of tonight's meeting, that only lasts as long as we're having electronic meetings. That, that is not for regular public hearings during regular meetings and regular times. So, that is only to try to accomplish soliciting public input during these challenging times we're currently in.
Yeah, and that's why I mentioned, as long as we're having electronic meetings, we have the 24-hour period. I, I would just, I mean, ask Mr. Hines if he wanted to amend the motion to just to add in the 24-hour look-back period, if you will.
No.
Well, we did have a public hearing on the first on the budget. However, a vote was not required at that meeting because it was scheduled for tonight. So, therefore, it's not quite the same. There was not a vote pending on the same night. So, certainly, anything that, I can't, you can't use that in total as an example because a vote wasn't required on that evening, yep.
I'm, I'm in favor of the motion. I'm just questioning how we would handle the public comment part of it. And even though the people have had an opportunity, we realize that before this meeting to do public comment too, you know. But it may be that we come to an issue that is more controversial than this one. And how would we handle that?
Well, you certainly have another public hearing this evening that you will need to, I would assume, treat in light fashion. So, again, staff commits that if we receive comments, we'll let you know one way or the other. After 24 hours have passed, if we've received anything, if so, we'll provide those comments accordingly, and we'll get the council back together post haste. Okay. Now, how that addresses tonight's motion and second, obviously, it is to approve.
I'm like Councilman Smith said. I mean, you know, in that area, you've got to understand who's... It's on Beacon Drive, you know. And if anybody had any objections, I think they would have made an attempt or got in touch with the town and inquired, or let someone know, you know. So, that's why I made the motion, and that's why I didn't want to rescind or add anything to it.
Well, it don't matter to me. We spent way too long talking about this. It don't make a...
I agree. I agree, brother.
The hill of beans worth a difference. Let's do something.
I guess that matters.
I mean, we're talking about an annexation we've been talking about for 15 minutes.
I guess we have a motion and a second, I believe.
We do.
All in favor, any further discussion?
So, would there be an amendment to this issue? There will be or will not be?
No amendment.
There is not currently an amendment to the motion. The motion is to approve the annexation as presented and seconded.
I think we have a motion and a second. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, any discussion?
We've wrapped up discussion.
We've had discussion. All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Councilman Hines? I'm asking for your vote.
Oh, oh, yes.
Thank you. Councilman Moore?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Robertson?
No.
Councilman Moy?
No.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Okay, the vote is three against, three against and two in favor, so therefore, the motion fails.
Mayor would like to make a motion that we accept the same recommendation with the amendment, that if anyone else making a public comment on this issue, that we will be reconvened to address that concern and interest.
Second.
So, that motion was made to approve the annexation contingent upon any future comments. And if future comments come in, to have the council reconvene to review those comments and address it accordingly. Is that correct, Mr. Moy?
That is correct.
And that motion was seconded by Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Okay, mayor, discussion?
Yes. So, that's within the 24-hour period of tonight, right?
Yes, sir. 24 hours from the conclusion of tonight's meeting.
Tonight's meeting, okay. All right. So, y'all rallying them up?
So, what, what staff will do is, at the conclusion of the 24-hour period, we will reach out to you all and let you know whether any comments were received or not, so you'll know whether your motion stands as is.
So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Councilman Hines?
No.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Robertson?
Yes.
Councilman Moy?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes. If it moves us on, yes.
I believe that vote was four to one in favor of the approval of the annexation contingent upon further comment.
Okay. Item number two is the Evergreen Construction Company rezoning request.
All right, I'm going to see if I can make this thing work, Terry. All right, so, got a rezoning request for Evergreen Construction Company. That's located on Highway 11 and Chapman Street. That's at the intersection with its, north of the intersection, Main Street. Partial numbers 20628 and 28376. It's a total site of 3.27 acres. Current zoning is mixed zoning, so a portion of it's R6 residential, and the other portion is general business. The proposed zoning would be multifamily residential, and that multifamily residential will be a conditional zoning district. So, that, the condition for the conditional district would be to allow for subject parcels to be developed as a 48-unit, 55 and older age-restricted senior rental housing. So, the adjacent property owners will mail notification of the rezoning request on February 10th and May 25th of this year. Notification was posted on the site on February 10th and verified that it was still there on May 25th. Notification was published in the Daily Reflector May 27th and June 3rd. So, there's your property there highlighted in red. So, you can see just to the south, Main Street. Just to the west, Highway 11. And ever to the east is obviously downtown. So, there's our current zoning. So, you can see on the outer edge toward Highway 11, that's your general business. The interior would be the R6 designation. So, existing land use, that's just telling what's out there. It's currently vacant. You can see the, in the H piece, piece on the, on the east side, you can see there is a residential home there. So, our future land use plan has this designated as mixed use. So, our mixed use, that's just a mix of commercial and real estate, restaurants, but it does include multifamily in that mixed-use character area. So, there's our general character area as it's presented in the land use plan. So, these are areas that are feel, are made for people and have just a little bit of that hustle and bustle with, with some small-town hospitality mixed in. So, you're looking at actual, you know, walkable developments. So, potential zoning, we'd like to point out that that's a central business, and MR is a potential zoning. So, it does fit in with the request. So, when we're, when we're looking at our land use plan, obviously, we want to look at our policies and our recommendations. So, going through our policies and recommendations on the land use, one of the big things is to activate downtown. So, certainly, the development down there would help activate downtown. So certainly, the development down there would help activate downtown. Policy six, support higher-density housing options in strategic locations. And under that subsection is encourage housing options in locations within walking distance of commercial and mixed uses. So it would fit that bill. Economic development, obviously, when we're looking at our land use plan, economic development is one of our, our major strategies. We want to, we try to emphasize in any type of proposal. Again, we see activate downtown. Winterville's downtown would provide a substantial amount of economic development. So policy five under economic development is promote retirement-focused living. So I know you guys have, know that we are certified North Carolina Retirement Community. Staff's put a lot of time and effort into getting that designation and continue to maintain that designations. So under downtown in our implementation recommendations, there it is again, activate downtown. So live, work, and play downtown. So encourage and allowing more dense residential development within walking distance to downtown. That's a major recommendation in the plan. So encourage investment and redevelopment. Obviously, we want to, we want to create an atmosphere where developers can come in and then give us a sustainable development and invest in our community. So also allow for, encourage and allow high-density residential in and around downtown. So this would definitely be in and around downtown. So moving on to staff recommendations. So staff does find the request is reasonable and in public interest because proposed zoning district is compatible with the surrounding land uses and the future land use plan. So we, staff recommends approval of the request to rezone 3.27 acres from R6 and general business to multifamily residential. That multifamily residential, if approved, would go with the, the condition that of developing an age-restricted 55-years-and-older senior living rental housing complex. So the rezoning process, this did go before the planning board way back in February, but the planning board recommended now nine to one. So now it would be up to town council to, to have a public hearing and then decide what to do. So I'll answer any questions you guys have before the, the public hearing.
Earlier, before the public hearing, I asked a question earlier. I emailed you and you did respond. Is it normal that you would not put into packet whether it was approved or not?
Oh, I apologize. I, I-
He did respond.
And I'll tell you, so that's, that's the original application. So that's the, the application that comes in from us. We actually do everything on a digital basis now, so that, and if you look up top, that's for staff purposes only. So that's kind of a note-taking thing. So that was kind of put in there in errand, in, in error. But we always put those recommendations in planning board minutes, so you'll be able to see those comments for minutes that are in your packets following those planning board meetings. And then obviously, we, we go through what the recommendation would do in our presentation. So I guess the question, the answer would be no, it's not normal because typically, it wouldn't have been in there, but it was just an oversight on my part.
Have letters been written to the neighbors this time?
Yes, so statutorily, we have to, we have to notify the adjacent property owners. And we go a step further and go out further than that. So we cast a wide net when we, we notify adjacent property owners. Then obviously, we posted in the paper and hadn't had the site posted with a sign.
That's for the second round, not the first round, correct?
It does. We go, we go the first round and the second round, yes, sir. So we, we-
Would any recommendations that you put sidewalks on that side of the road where the building's located?
So when we do a multifamily development, sidewalks would be incorporated. So we'll have to treat, just treat the site development plan just like we would a subdivision. So it would follow in those requirements, yes, sir.
How about a sidewalk, crosswalk, Depot Street to Main at this time? Also, a crosswalk with signals at Main and Mill?
So you're getting into a little bit more information that I'm prepared to answer. We, the town owns Chapman, so we maintain that. Main Street, is that our road? That's our, that's the empty.
That's the state's road.
So once we go out for site development review, we'll, we'll analyze the numbers that are submitted as far as traffic counts. If a traffic count analysis or traffic impact analysis is required, that may require them to do it. I don't have those numbers yet because we don't have those solid numbers yet. All we have at this point is the rezoning request. We do have the liberty of knowing what they're going to put there, but we don't have the actual numbers. So we, we know the conceptual drawings. We know exactly, almost exactly what's going to be there, but we don't have that hard data yet. That'll be coming in our site development plan if and when the council allows us to have it.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Moy, I mean, the question we asked about the sidewalk, what about on Depot?
So that would, yes, so that would be, we treat this just like, so anytime we're doing a, a site development plan, it has to, multifamily specifically is addressed in the zoning ordinance to fall under subdivision review process. So when we do sidewalks and we're determining if a sidewalk is required, there's a certain number of criteria. One would be what type of road it's on. So pretty much every road in town is designed to fall under a category of collector, minor, or major thoroughfare. So one of those roads, depending on what it is, you either have to have it on one side or both sides. This would fall under the, of a collector street, so it would be at least one side out there, yes, sir.
So you will sidewalk Depot all the way down?
Yep. All, all the way down, no, well, we're just talking about the property that they're developing. It's really hard to, to stick a developer with the responsibility of putting infrastructure on property that they don't own. Now, I don't, there may be some situations out there where, where you could come to a development agreement, but that would be above and beyond what the ordinance requires.
And the reason why I ask that, we, we're talking about 55 and up seniors. In order for them to be able to go from that location to uptown or downtown, they got to have some means of safety. And the safety part of it would be not held them out there in the street. The safety part of it will have them on the sidewalk. Because you're talking about different types of ability that they do have. And it can be a physical therapy-type setting also. I mean, for them to be able to exercise beyond out there in that location. But if we're asking them to be part of our downtown development, we have to provide means for them to be able to, to, to go down there. And that would be one of the ways that we can help provide, if we could provide the sidewalk, at least on Depot. It's just my thinking.
Councilman Moy, walkability in the downtown area and connectivity of neighborhoods is critically important to the town. It's something that we've identified and we have a walkability plan in place. So certainly, as the downtown continues to develop, we would want to supplement improvements made to enable all residents who live in any type of housing in the area be able to get where they want to go safely.
Now, so I understand that the request is for multifamily?
Yes. Yes, sir.
And does that mean something like apartments?
Yes, sir.
I think you're getting ready to get the presentation on what the potential project would be.
Yep. So and I will note that the representatives from the Evergreen Construction are in attendance, so they're, they are prepared during the public hearing to give you guys a brief presentation on what they are envisioning for that site.
Okay. Any further comments?
I just want to ask them about the, the property itself. I just want, this piece right here that's missing, now, who owned that? It's a, it's more like a, a puzzle and like one piece is, is missing.
Um, now, if you wouldn't ask me, I could have told you the exact name, but it is a, it's a property owner that lives in a single-family residential home right there.
It is a single-family home.
It's a single-family residential house, yes, sir.
Ms. Bonnie Tucker lives there, works at the post office.
Gotcha. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, with that, any further discussion or questions? With that, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone that is in favor?
They need to speak first. Want them to speak first?
Yeah, they'd be in favor.
I think they'll certainly speak in favor of their project, so. Just let me know.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tim Morgan. I'm with Evergreen Construction Company. And just a bit of a background of, of who Evergreen is, as you see on the screen in front of you, we were established in 1978. We are located in Raleigh. I've been with the company for 26 years. And we focus on developing, constructing, and managing multifamily rental communities across North Carolina. We are only in North Carolina. And to date, we have 46 properties in our portfolio, which is just over 2,000 units. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
Mayor, he's still going.
I've got a few more slides, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's, that's fine. Can you? All right, just to give you a sense of some of the housing that we have developed in other communities in North Carolina, this is a 48-unit, two-story elderly multifamily development in Garner, North Carolina that was placed in service at the end of 2014.
Ready?
Yes, ma'am. This is another two-story, 48-unit senior rental community that's located in Beaufort, North Carolina. Yes. And this is a, one more version of a three-story, 48-unit senior development that we did in Pittsboro, North Carolina. And just wanted to give you some typical indoor amenities that all of these communities that we develop offer. What you have before you is the, the main lobby area that, as people would come through the double doors that you see at the back of that first photograph, this is what they're seeing as they come into the property or to the building, I should say. That's a typical mail kiosk. Again, the post office has access to the building and gets in and distributes the mail according to each post parcel. Next. All of our communities have a TV lounge area, a computer center, a multipurpose room with a kitchen, so they can use that for birthday parties, Christmas functions, family gatherings, various community activities. And we also have a fitness center. So this is a colored, which is, it's hard to tell, but it's a colored elevation of what we are proposing here in Winterville. Again, it's a two-story structure. It's 48 units consisting of 24 one-bedrooms and 24 two-bedroom units. This is a, again, it's hard to tell, this is an L-shaped design building. As you approach the building, you have a covered drive-through drop-off area.
Will it have elevators?
Yes, sir. It's got one elevator in the common area. And then each of the ends of the buildings have stairwells as well.
Are you going to have special rooms?
Are you going to have special apartments for handicap accessory?
Excuse me, all of these units, because they're served by an elevator, are accessible.
For handicap accessory?
Yes, sir. 10% of the units are fully equipped already from day one. But all the other units, the only difference that you have between a fully accessible unit and a non-accessible in our buildings is the height of the kitchen cabinets and whether they are open underneath the sink.
You said 10% will be?
Yes, sir.
In the beginning?
Yes, sir.
Handicap accessory.
And this is a preliminary site plan. Okay. I know a lot, a lot of discussion was around, you know, walkability and sidewalks. And so as Mr. Jones indicated, along here, sorry for the shakiness, but along here, those would be the sidewalks that the town would require us or any other developer to install. And then, the internal sidewalks, you see coming off that end of the building, we're going to connect the walkways, so they're always, you know, walking on a sidewalk to get to the public street. Same on that one as well, or even if they come out the main entrance going left or right, they have sidewalks all the way to the public roadway. Again, this site plan shows the required parking requirements for the town of Winterville, which is more than we find is necessary, but it does meet the requirements. Typically, about 75% of our residents and our senior properties own vehicles. At the planning board, there was a comment made about the amount of traffic that this proposal might produce. And so I want to bring up Rick Baker with the Timmins Group that performed a traffic analysis, and he can walk you through what the outcome of that was.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rick Baker. I'm with the Timmins Group in Raleigh, North Carolina, and with the engineer on the project. And we, we did the site plan layout, so it could also answer some additional questions on that if you had that, but also wanted to present these, the traffic generation numbers that you see posted in front of you. What we did here is we compared the property as it is zoned today, which, part of that is on general business up on Highway 11 and R6, which is from that zoning line towards Chapman Street. And so what we did is based on those acreages, we determined that it's likely in the general business, a 10,000-square-foot shopping center could be built on that portion of the zoning. And up to 15 single-family homes could be built on the R6 portion. And we did the traffic generation based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. And as you can see on the left of the screen up there with that single-family housing and shopping center, you see a daily total number of vehicular trips of 1,438. 1,438. So we took that number and we compared it to the 48-unit senior housing project, which would be the numbers on the right of your screen. And that total daily trip number is 168 vehicular trips. So the rezoning and going with the 48-unit senior housing would be a drastic reduction in expected vehicular trips from this property. We also have it broken down in the morning or AM peak hour into PM peak hour. Generally, with shopping center use and single-family use, those numbers are higher than a typical senior project, just because seniors typically are not leaving to go to work first thing in the morning or coming home at normal rush hour times. So there's a difference, lower, a lower count in those AM and PM, AM and PM peak hours as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Go back to the site plan, please. So was that the lady you're referring to who worked at the post office, sir?
Yes.
Okay, so there's the existing, existing single-family home right there. Chapman Street is here. Highway 11 is here. Depot Street, right there. Existing church is in that area right there. And in the site plan, we pushed the L-shaped building as close to Highway 11 as we could. It's hard to tell the color difference, but we show a, a light blue here for a stormwater treatment device. And we also show a little one over here and one right here that's more- That's more area than we probably need. We wanted to make sure that we could provide enough area for stormwater treatment. But we were trying to push the building as close to Highway 11 as possible, to get it farther away from the single-family home as possible. And we show a drive, only one driveway into the site on the north side here, and trying to keep it away from that home as well.
I've got some questions that's not related to transportation. It's related to Evergreen.
Okay.
This is proposed at a 55-plus. So what if my 26-year-old daughter wants to rent a unit? Is that allowable?
No.
Good. So, are you saying that if they're not 55, they cannot get into this place?
No. What I'm saying is, we, there are, there are two federal definitions of senior housing. One definition is, all members of the household have to be 62 years of age and older. The second definition is at least one member of the household has to be 55 years of age and older. So what we do on top of that is, we also say that no one in that household can be under the age of 45. And that is simply because most people marry different ages. And so, you know, if we have someone that has, is 55, and she wants to bring her husband with her who's 45, we think they should go together, so that we can do that.
Okay. I actually think this is a good location for this type unit. Has Evergreen sold any of their buildings after they've built them?
We, as I said in the presentation, we develop, we build, and we manage. So, it's like a marriage, it's a long-term commitment. We've been in existence since 1978, and the investors are in it for 15 years, and then they would like to get out. And so, what can happen is, yes, at that point, we and the investors could agree to sell the property, but what we do is we buy out their interest. Now, there are land use restrictions that run with the property that require, for 30 years, that this property be operated and rented as a senior rental community.
So Evergreen has not sold any buildings that they've built?
We have sold to date, only five. And those were family properties. Two in Knightville, one in Wake Forest, and two in Holly Springs.
Okay, so Brian, my question is, if they build this and they were to sell it, are these, these same restrictions in place for 55-plus?
Yes.
So someone that, someone that purchases this would, would have to follow those same rules?
Yes, so the, the zoning district would follow the property, not the owners. So anytime they wanted to change it, they'd have to come back before this board and get permission to change that. So you would, this board would approve any type of request to change. And that would be obviously a rezoning request, in the form of a rezoning request. And like I said, on top of that, there are separate recorded land use restrictions that are recorded and run with the land for 30 years, and it's got to be 55 and over. Can we go to the next?
Sure.
If we're ready, to the next slide?
Yes, go ahead.
Is that the one?
That is.
Is this one, this the slide?
Yes, I've got three or four more slides in the presentation. And then we can always back up if you'd like and repeat any of these slides again. One of the other comments, and I seem to recall four people spoke at the public hearing, but at the planning board meeting. Another comment made was, how is this going to impact my property values? Or is it going to impact my property values? In the red box right here is a 80-unit senior property that we developed in Raleigh. I pulled the tax values, Table 1 up here, is referring to these homes that abut the property. And in Wake County, they revalue their properties every four years. So we had the 2020 values, 2019 values right there, the 2020 values right there. I realize the table is small, but what this table is showing is, the average property value increased 4% on these homes right here. So then, I looked at a few streets back, these homes, which is what this table reflects. And those values increased 1%. Actually, which means it's less than what the ones that abutted increased at. So I went to another property that we developed in Raleigh, and it's a 48-unit family rental community. And it's these six buildings right here. And I looked at the value of these homes right there. And what this table up here represents, the value changes from 19 to 20, those increased an average of 24%. So then I looked at a few streets back, these homes. That's what this table represents, average, the same, 24%. So we're not seeing an effect on the valuation in these two examples. So, then I've got a couple of third-party studies in this PowerPoint, where they examined median property value data from Zillow for 181 urban neighborhoods and 14 small rural towns across the state, to determine whether this type of housing that we're developing or proposing has any link to the property values of the surrounding homes. Again, I realize it's hard, what these two graphs are showing is that the median changes in the property values over several years for rural areas and the metro areas. And what the graph represents is, there are no significant differences that exist between places with similar properties versus places without. So, this paragraph here is basically saying, despite some homeowners' fears that rental housing with, will hurt the property values, but the analysis shows no link to that. Another third-party study that was published in Novogradic, looked at 10 communities, and this was in the state of Georgia, in the Atlanta metro area and suburb area. They looked at 10 different communities that had, again, senior housing developed in the communities. And the conclusion of the study said, the results indicated that the neighborhoods around these new senior developments rising in value. Additionally, when comparing appreciation parameters, these type properties outperform the market at large. The study provides facts-based evidence that the senior housing does not affect property values. And then, as was shared at the planning board, members of the body wanted to know what was our proposed rent structure and our income set-asides, and so I just wanted to, again, share this information. I know it's a lot to take in, so I am here for as long as you need. We can go back to any slide that you'd like.
Is, is there a staff person that is in this building during the day?
I'm sorry.
Is there, is there a staff from Evergreen? Is there a person that oversees this building on a day-to-day basis?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or once it's built, is it, is it just there for the?
Yeah, we have a, we have a, within the building itself, there's a rental office. And again, the, the building itself is also, when you approach the front door, there's a call panel entry system, so you can buzz the office. Or if you know a resident staying there, you can buzz their unit number, and then the resident can, within their own unit, hit the unlocked door, and that guest can gain interest of the building. Likewise, the same with someone visiting, trying to get into the office. There's an onsite office, staff with a manager, and we also have a maintenance person designated for this community. And we, third-party out, or hire a grass lawn service. Same thing with extermination services.
So there, there's a maintenance person and a, a staff member overseeing the complex Monday through Friday?
It can depend on whether we have someone that's full-time or part-time. A property of this size, once it goes through lease-up, then it reverses back to part-time hours, which is about 29, 30 hours. And we have, we have a regional manager that this property would fall under his or her portfolio, and each regional manager in our company has about 13 properties under their portfolio. So they're out visiting each location about every three weeks. And of course, we're in Raleigh, we've got a, you know, 10-person central office staff that's available also. Thank you.
I, I guess, you know, we can speak in favor.
I'm sorry. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor?
Am I allowed to speak in favor now? Okay. Okay. I've experienced two of these housing complexes, Ashen Springs in Aiden and Willow Springs in Greenville. And I've been impressed by the security that they have for our seniors that live there. The fact that you can't just walk in the building, you have to know the person's room, get in touch with them in order to get in. Also, the way that those places look, those common areas, is the way that they look all the time, when I've visited the people that live there. The areas outside are landscaped, and the buildings are well-maintained. It's an ease of application period, of application process. We have, I know we have at least four people living in Ashen Springs and Willow Springs that were residents of Winterville, that went there because they needed housing. And they love it. I talked to all of them, and they just love living there. They have an area they can have Bible study, I think they do that in Aiden, I know they have that. And it's just a nice place for them to live. And it is affordable for them, of course, you know, it's based on income. But these are all seniors, and I think that if we had this kind of housing in our area, we would attract these people. They do have privacy, always, they're not opening up outside. But it is a good place for seniors to live. And over a period of time, I think I would have seen the properties go down, same things that I would consider there, but I haven't seen that in these structures that I, that are there. My niece lives in one of them, and a couple of my church members live in one. And also, in our land use, that future land use plan in my career, that was one of the things we adopted as a board. We paid for that study, and in that study, it says that we need to have, to offer more, more variety in the housing choices in Winterville. And this is one area that we could do this in. And I would hope that those of you on the board would, at least, let's try this, let's have this area over there, and let it be developed, and bring these people in, and allow them to enjoy the type of living that I've seen, that you should enjoy. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak in favor?
No, I probably have a question.
We actually go in, actually, we close the, have the, close the public hearing, we have discussion.
Okay.
I'll wait to that.
I'll wait to that point then, Mayor.
Now, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition?
Mayor, I will report that, again, much like our previous public hearing, we had not received any comments as of the beginning of this meeting. We will be accepting comments through 24 hours after the conclusion of tonight's meeting, same as with our previous public hearing. But to date, there have been no comments submitted.
Okay. With that being said, we'll close the public hearing. Now we have discussion.
Councilman Moore, could you speak into the mic?
Yes, yes, sorry. Mr. Jones, why was the planning board against it? Nine to one vote is a big, nine to one, that's a big margin.
Yeah, nine to one's a big margin. The consensus was, I think, the traffic concerns, walkability was concerned, and those were the two biggest ones. So, other than that, there was really no specific reason given, other than walkability and potential traffic impacts.
And I think that they addressed many of the concerns that were there that night. One of them was property values. They have addressed it with the slides that they presented.
Well, our, our property values, we've, we've had over 300 homes built in Winton in four years, with a value of $6 million. But our town went down and only increased 268,000. Six million valued came to our town and ended up increasing our value only 268,000. That's a concern. I don't know if the county's not doing their job or what, but you know, that's, is that unusual? Mr. Jones, the property values not increased any more than that?
You're getting into a category that's...
You have to experience. Is that unusual?
I'd hate to even get into the appraisal aspect of the tax office. Sometimes I can't understand what, why they do the things they do, so.
I agree. I, I too like, I agree with Ms. Robertson, that I liked, I went and did some research on the properties. But it's a nine-to-one vote, that's the only thing my concern is, nine-to-one vote of the planning board, people, we appointed to look at it. And they said nine to one, that's, that's pretty strong. But I do agree, the properties look good. I did some research on you too.
Well, Councilman Moore, if I could say that, I do believe that Evergreen has presented some information in response to some of the concerns that came out at the planning board. So I'm not sure how that vote would go if, if that information had been discussed.
But two have called me already, and they said they can respond. And they were told against, of course, one of them was Ms. Tupper, and another is a property owner next door to them, who lives outside town, he owns three properties along there, close to it. And he's been in the hospital for the past week.
Well, I'll make the comment that this board has disagreed with the planning board on a number of occasions in my 15, 16 years on this board. And I attended that meeting, and most of the, I think, concerns were in regards to transportation. Personally, I don't see any major issues transportation-wise.
The only way I see transportation is having a turn light at Main and Highway 11, not having to take a left turn. And that concerns me, if you don't protect the left turn on a major highway, we've talked about it for 10 years, that DMT has not addressed that issue. And also have an issue at Main and Mill and Highway 11, which is the most dangerous intersection in Pitt County. And the NPO board is still not pushing for that.
It would also be good to have a right turn there at nine to three. I've got, put the... I got pooped by the sheriff's department for making, for swinging out to make a right turn.
Mayor members, go ahead.
As for the more, how can you control to make sure that only 55 and older are living in those apartments? If you have more than one bedroom?
I know we've closed the public hearing, but I, I think, uh, it'd probably be a better answer coming from, uh, uh, Mr. Morgan.
I think he's coming.
Each, uh, individual that wants to, uh, live at one of our communities has to apply for the, uh, for the apartment. So there's an application process. And so, again, you know, the criteria is 55 and older, uh, with no one under the age of 45. And so, you know, birth certificates confirm that. There is no incentive for us to move in ineligible households. We have investors that we have promised to maintain the community in the way it was proposed to be developed. And there are penalties and ramifications if we do not. We have lenders involved that review our files on top of our internal staff reviewing what is generated from the site staff. We have our investor who hires asset management folks that do the same thing, as well as hire a third-party company that reviews the files. So, could somebody have a friend that bring in there and they try and stay there? It's possible, but the reality is, it's gonna be caught sooner or later. And it's usually sooner. Not saying that we have that problem, but when you go into these buildings, it's much like going into a hotel. You know, you have the common areas, about typical buildings, about 58,000 square feet. About 20% of that is common area space. It's much like a hotel where you have internal corridors with the residential units on both sides. So, people talk. If someone's breaking the rules, we're gonna find out about it eventually. We also do, uh, unit inspections every six months. Our investor and our lender also do unit inspections every two to three years. So, we are constantly having our shoulders and our paperwork looked over by third-party, uh, companies and individuals.
Excuse me, uh, this is Councilman Hines. Do y'all use like, uh, gym management, or are you familiar with gym management?
I used to work for them.
You used to work for them, but you know what I'm talking about, right?
Yes, sir.
Uh-huh. Cause you was talking about reviews. I know with our multifamily properties, uh, some of them are actually managed by gym management. And of course, we go in and do internal reviews, uh, and then also meet with gym management. This is, uh, USDA properties.
Yes, sir, I'm familiar with gym management. I'm familiar with their portfolio. And even within our portfolio, we have some USDA financed properties. As Mayor Protam alluded to earlier, Ashton Spring in Aiden falls under that umbrella, which is a property that we develop and we manage. And then likewise, the property that she mentioned, Willow Spring in Greenville, is not a USDA property. But again, gym management has properties similar to Willow Spring as well.
Okay. I don't have any problem with property, uh, myself, so, I mean, yeah.
Gym management, uh, is, controls the gray stone apartments outside of Winterville. The gray apartments, they, they do that. Because every year, they send us a questionnaire about, um, if we hear of any complaints about, uh, rent and stuff, the application process. But they manage the gray-looking apartments.
Mayor members of the council, uh, I don't normally say anything during these times, but I will say that during my eight years in Beaufort, I had plenty of opportunities to work with Evergreen as town manager and found that, am familiar with their properties, lived near some of their properties. They were great to work with. We found them to be good partners and the experience, uh, certainly while I was there and I think since then, has been really good with the town.
Is anyone in opposition to this, this is a public hearing? Anyone in opposition? I'm sorry, that's right, we opened and closed it, uh, and we, uh, we hadn't closed. We, we closed it, but we are in the discussion mode. Any further discussion? What is the board's pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve the, um, Evergreen's rezoning request.
Hold on a second.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, though.
Councilman Hines, is that okay, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Robertson made motion, Councilman Hines seconded to approve the project as presented, or excuse me, the rezoning as presented. King, you may want to turn that on.
Is that better? Yeah, the, the, the motion that was made, is that, um, motion include the, uh, 24-hour look-back period on further comment?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
That's, that's why I wanted, make sure that we did it.
The motion is, uh, approval subject to the review within, uh, the 24 hours of any further, uh, public comment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So tell me what happens if?
Mayor, I mean, Councilman Samantha, would you, thank you.
Yes, Terry, I'll get in the mic.
I'm certainly leaning towards, um?
In the mic.
Running for this, but my concern is that I did not have with the annexation because I did not think anyone really cared about that annexation. But there could be some concerns, um, with the rezoning and approving this request. So my question is, if we get some feedback from folks in the next 24 hours, what, what happens?
So once that 24-hour period has passed, we would collect that information. We would disseminate it to council and then we would quickly set a date for our meeting time so that we could get together and discuss.
So this, this vote would be null and void?
Well, it would be.
And, and if we don't get any, any concerns, any feedback from the citizens?
If, if you vote tonight contingent upon future comment and we get no comment, the vote stands.
Got you, but if we do get comments, then we would, we would schedule a meeting.
Yes, sir. Post haste, not to.
That answers my question.
Thank you.
I have, now I have a question that you brought up right then. It, uh, this property has, to my knowledge, no houses or anything on it. Has it ever been annexed?
It's, it's in town limits. It's already, it's already in town limits.
Okay, okay, all right. So, uh, did we ever vote?
We have a, a motion to approve contingent upon future comments within the next 24-hour period at the conclusion of the meeting, seconded by Councilman Hines? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All in?
I didn't know if you want to call for any more discussion, Mayor.
No more discussion. All in favor of the motion?
Uh, Councilman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
No.
Mayor Protam Robertson?
Yes.
Councilman Moy?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Okay, as I, uh, understand it, the vote to approve contingent upon future comments is four to one in favor.
Just a brief comment, why I voted against it. Don't always agree with them, but you know, we had a, uh, property beside, um, Open Door. And the planning board voted against it and we voted against it also. We went along with this planning board. And now the property has been purchased by Open Door. Rocky Russell had said he was gonna come back to us for, for houses and he did not. But now the church has bought it. And, um, if I were a planning board member, and nine to one vote is a strong, strong vote. And the people were against it at the meeting. But I see the other point, it's nice property. And since I'm elected by the people, I'm gonna do what they say. Might make a mistake. I asked one of them along the property line about his property, did improve the properties. It's not fair to y'all to build something that nice and still have those houses beside it that look so terrible. You can improve the property, no doubt, no doubt about it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Moving on down to, there's no, there's no public comment, no one signed up to speak, I don't think.
No, sir, no public comment.
Item number 10, consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda. Hold on a second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Ma- Mayor, you want to call for discussion?
Any, any discussion?
We do need to set the time for that public hearing, Don, the consent agenda.
I, I believe we would schedule that for the August meeting, is that right? Don is shaking his head yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of, did we, we didn't vote? All in favor of motion to approve the consent agenda, say aye.
Councilman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Robertson?
Yes.
Councilman Moy?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
All vote in favor to approve the consent agenda as presented tonight.
All righty, moving on. Item number 11 is new business. The first one is the 2020-21 fiscal year budget ordinance.
Well, folks, it is that time. You have the budget ordinance in front of you for fiscal year 2021. It is presented with the sewer increase that's been previously discussed. That would be $3.50 per household per month for a total of $42 per month. And that's all I have to present on that budget ordinance and we would ask for council approval.
I make a motion that we approve our fiscal year budget ordinance for 2020, 2021.
Is there a second?
Guess it does, then.
We don't approve it tonight, then we have more work to do, folks.
That's right.
Our second motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the budget. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Your second is, what, for the increase?
This is for the budget ordinance, which includes the increase. And just an FYI, I think we lost Councilman Hines. He's probably done for the evening, so just wanted y'all to know that.
Is there any further discussion on the motion?
My concern with that, I think I, 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 that's my concern on our last time we met on this. I don't have no problem and there's a need for that project. As we said, that I hate for us, I don't want us to lose the grant that has been presented to us. Also, the finance part of it was zero interest. That is great. But my other big concern is that we have, with the situation with this pandemic that we have, we chose to help our citizen out with the electric rate. And I know this is up for discussion again tonight. But as it stands right now, we have reduced it to help our citizen out. And now we are saying, we helping you out on this end. Now, on the other end, we need your help for an increase on your sewer. That's where I'm having a problem with. I, I have tried to figure out and see how we can do something different. Hope that things will get better, but things has not gotten better. We still have a lot of peoples unemployed. I can say this, that we are grateful that none of our employees here at the town of Winterville have to be in a position that a lot of citizens are placed at today. And I'm grateful, not only just because of this board has something to do with it, because of the citizen. The, the citizen of our town has supported us to help operate this community. I just cannot see how we can place any more burden on some that is just getting by. And there is no telling at this time, how many that we have that's not even, can't afford to pay their utility bills. By the grace of God right now, the only reason why it has not been turned off is because of what the government has put, put in place, or the family government. They're not turning anybody's utility off. I've been looking at five of them. I think they had a large number of ones that they do serve. And then percentage of the ones has not paid their utility. And they are saying they're placing something in place after this is all over. I'm thinking that they have six months to catch up and pay that utility. And we are talking about adding on right now on the end. I do know that we are in a situation of a need, but there is a greater need that the ones cannot afford to pay this increase. I would ask this board to take that into consideration. And that was one of the reasons why I asked our town manager, Ms. Parker, to go back and look at this budget again. And I think there were some things that came out of the budget or the report that was addressed if we could get some of those funds out of the general fund. Is that right, Ms. Parker?
I believe I sent the, a total of six emails, budget-related, so there were many subjects covered. One of which was, uh, the circumstan- circumstances under which general fund monies can be transferred to an enterprise fund. But I would point out that the general fund was not balanced itself.
And it says that only, that will be done only in a situation related to what we're having today. Is that correct?
Well, I, I, you could certainly, I would assume that a pandemic would probably be one of those circumstances. However, if you're gonna pull a fund, pull from a fund, it wouldn't be general fund. That would not be my managerial recommendation. That fund is not such that you need to be pulling for that to balance the sewer fund.
What would be your recommendation?
My recommendation is what I've submitted, which would be the increase.
What would be your second recommendation?
If you're gonna look at a fund, you would have to look at either the water or the, or the electric fund. Neither of which I'm recommending, but the general fund would be the last fund I would recommend. Next to the sewer fund.
I know that this is unusual for us to be talking about something like this, but this is in a very unusual time. Only thing that I would love for us to do is we can stick together and just get over this hurdle. That's what I'm praying for. That's why I'm asking, I'm speaking. That's why I'm asking, I'm speaking like I am about this situation. I'm not saying that I'm against the project. There's no doubt in my mind that we need this project. I have seen this project already work before.
If I may, on your agenda, this is the 2018 sewer project we're talking about that would be in jeopardy. You have the 2020 sewer project on the agenda to move forward. That's a completely separate funding amount with a completely separate rate increase that's going to need to be talked about at some point in the near future associated with that project. You all have seen all of these numbers. These are things that we've gone over in detail with council. So I just want to put that out there because that's a point of discussion as we move forward. We're talking about not moving forward potentially with 2018 project that we're already committed to. And now we have 2020 on the, on the heels of that.
Have we, have we phrased everything pertaining to our budget? Like, I know we talked about salary, overtime, traveling, some of the programs that we have. Have we really put a, a phrase on anything that we have been doing normally?
Absolutely. All of the above.
All of the above, what I just got through speaking of.
Yes, sir.
Would that be a saving?
Are you asking if that was a savings?
Yes.
Well, it certainly was money we have not expended. It remains to be seen how that will affect the, the fund balance line items for, or excuse me, bottom line for this current budget year.
What about for the next fiscal year?
I, I think it's, I mean, you've seen the budget, it is, it is lean. There are no raises for employees included. We've covered the increase in insurance, we've covered the increase in retirement, all of that. I tried to spell out in that plethora of information that I sent. I do realize it was rather a lot of information, but there's not a lot of fat in that budget at all.
So the only option that we will have is, is to get the money from another source.
If we don't take, if we don't, it's either that or not move forward with the sewer project. If we don't move forward with the sewer project, then we turn away and/or have spent unnecessarily a total of about $1.4 million. All of that was spelled out in that information as well. And I would imagine that that probably would affect funding for our 2020 sewer project and probably funding moving forward with applicable agencies.
I'm asking, do they do this for this period? That's the only thing I'm asking.
The only challenge I would counsel or caution council on is that we don't know when this period's ending. And I hate to say it like this, but we've got increases related to general fund item, revenue items and utility items moving forward. This is not in a vacuum. This is not the only increase that this board will have to grapple with moving forward.
And the reason being is with 300 new homes in four years, we only increased, again, in value, the whole town $268,000. This board is doing something wrong. Homes are supposed to increase in value.
Councilman Moore, I will need to check those numbers. I realize that, I know we sent that to you, and I just don't have it in front of me. But I will double check that.
Yeah, four years ago, it was only $240,000. It's every four years. So we're aesthetically, we've got, and maybe we should have increased taxes even more this time.
Well, we have talked about.
Make our town look better than it does now.
There is a need for a tax increase, we've talked about that as well. That was not proposed, obviously, in the 2021 budget.
Yeah, well, this budget increases 3% because of neutral, we're not neutral, but we gotta have the money to move forward. We don't have a choice.
We need to check them numbers because if we only went up 268, I need to call somebody because my house went up $30,000.
I think the valuation itself, and I think Anthony's, yeah, there he is.
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to get those exact numbers for you right now.
Yeah, if you'll give Anthony just a moment, he will look at the valuation figures versus what went, what, the increase in the actual estimate for out-of-labor revenue.
Well, the three cent we know is what, $76,000 each, right? That's 220 right there.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think you're going to find the valuation figures itself went up much more than that. It may not have equated to, but about that much more in tax revenue.
I talked to one individual, his home on Main Street doubled, luck eater, that he went and they reduced it. But originally, it doubled the value of his father's home.
My, my, my home increased.
Mine is too.
But some, but some of the others went down then.
And, and I got rental profit in Greenville, it increased.
I'm pretty sure we had, and I don't want to throw this out, Anthony will correct me, but about a 10% increase across the board for Wannaville.
That's about right.
That's about right. That's what mine was.
That sounds what Sam presented to us in the meeting.
Yeah, I think the valuation for the town as a whole increased about 10%.
But, but then again, that's not the paperwork we received.
Now, what you, you're talking about the anticipated, projected revenue.
The anticipated projected revenue is going to be down muted somewhat because we reduced because of uncertainty in the economy and with COVID. We changed our collection rate from, you know, 98% to 97%.
Correct.
Now, that's not a guarantee that that's going to happen, we may still collect at 98%. But, you know, like we talked during the budget work sessions, you know, we, we want to err on the side of caution and make sure that the town's positioned properly.
Look at the entrance of Main Street and Highway 11. Look at the homes along that street, how they look. Think about it, it's a main, main drive, Highway 11.
I used to live on Main Street. Right behind the Dollar General. But.
Now, I understand what Councilman Smith was talking about, he needed it, you know.
I, I have just a comment that really, I, I, I said, do I need to really say this? I used to own several rental units in Greenville. And I'd have tenants to come to me and say, well, it's, it's really hard for me to pay the rent this month. I'd say, well, I, I could kind of understand, but I, I got one question for you. Do you have cable TV? Uh, yes. Do you have a cell phone? Yes. Do you have a regular telephone? Yes. I grew up, and we didn't have none of that. And that's to, you could live without that. So how many of the residents of Wannaville have cable TV and cell phones? That's, that, are they, are they required to have it? No, but they have it. We're talking about $3.50 a month increase, $42 a year. $42 a year. A family of four can go to Highway 55 and spend more than $42 with one meal.
Let us call for a vote then.
But if we, if I could give you the information, the, the property valuation, it went from $822 million to $890,556,000. So that's a $68,514,000 difference in valuation. Now, again, I think what Mr. Councilman Moore is referring to is the revenue, uh, revenue received from that, and that, again, and that was muted somewhat because of the fact that we, we did reduce our, our potential own collections at 97% versus 98, is what we typically budget.
So the total was a $68 million increase in evals. That's how much.
Right.
Call for a vote.
I got a question.
We, we have a question.
I got a question. If we were to increase property taxes, we'd be asking our property owners to pay. But yet, and still, if we increase our sewer fee, we're asking the people who use the service to pay.
Correct.
And that's, that's, that's the difference I said. The users of the service would absorb the cost rather than the property owners.
It's just like the electric. A thousand people living in Wannaville don't have our utilities. But the other people who do have utilities are paying the price. The people who agree with utilities are not paying their fair share. You notice that?
They're not paying their fair share for.
The $600,000 we've taken out of utilities to, to our town budget, $650,000. They're not paying anything on that.
But we're not buying any for them either.
I know, but still, they're not.
But they're paying property taxes.
Yeah, right, but not utilities.
That's, that's, the thing I'm, I'm getting at is that the people using the service would pay for the service. And that would include, I would assume that we have more people using the service than we do property owners.
We've had a call for question or vote, we require the vote. All in favor of passing the budget with, as I understand it, the $3.50 increase in sewer, is that correct? Isn't that?
The, the budget ordinance currently submitted for fiscal year 2021 includes, is balanced and includes a $3.50 per month per household increase in the flat sewer rate. And that's a total of $42 a month.
We have, have, do I hear a motion that we approve that?
I already made a motion, didn't I? We got a vote there.
We have a motion and a second, I understand. Okay?
We do, and Mayor, I believe Councilman Hines has rejoined us. I hear him.
I'm sorry.
Are you okay?
Yeah.
So if you're ready for me to poll the board for the vote, I'll start with Council. Go ahead, Councilman.
Can you tell me what the motion, I'm sorry, I missed the motion.
We're talking about the, the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2021. That ordinance is balanced and includes the sewer rate increase of 3.50 per month per household for a total of $42. We have a motion and a second to approve the budget ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, and would you like me to start with you or save you for last?
You start. Yes.
Okay, Councilman Hines? That's a yes?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Robertson?
Yes.
Councilman Moy?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Okay, I believe that vote to approve the budget ordinance is 4 to 1 in favor of the ordinance. And all I will say on behalf of staff is thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number two is the school resource officer contract between Town of Wannaville and Pitt County Schools.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Okay, we have Councilman Moore making the motion, Mayor Pro Tim Robertson seconding it. Seconding it.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Okay, Councilman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Robertson?
Yes.
Councilman Moy?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Item number three is the reverter clause for partial number 23091, Habitat for Humanity.
Thank you, and I'm going to ask Ken to speak to that if he'll speak into the mic.
We're talking, okay. In 2009, the town deeded a tract of land on Chapman Street to Habitat for Humanity, Pitt County. As is customary, and also as in following guidance of the general statute, a what I call a reverter clause, or possibility reverter, was added to the deed. Here's one sentence, if you'll allow me, I'll read it to you, this is straight out of the deed. Whereas grantor, the town of Wannaville was the grantor, decides to waive the property to grantee, grantee is Habitat for Humanity, as long as grantee uses the property for the purpose of constructing upon it a home for persons of low to moderate income to be owner occupied within five year, within a five-year period from the date of this deed. If not, the property shall revert to the grantor, which simply means that if they didn't put it into use within five years, it would revert back to the town. Well, this was in 2009, we've, of course, long since gone beyond the five-year period. Last month in May, I was contacted by Habitat for Humanity and was told then, and it's also in the letter that was part of the agenda package, that they said that because of the size and the shape of the lot, that Habitat basically couldn't build on it. And so they didn't basically have a use for the property. They had been contacted by the adjacent property owner, and there was apparently some discussion back and forth between Habitat and the adjacent property owner about whether Habitat could gift the property to the adjacent owner. Habitat went and looked at the deed, saw the reverter clause, and contacted me. So in the, the letter that's again attached to your agenda, they're suggesting, or they're, they're requesting that we either waive the possibility reverter and allow them to gift the property to the adjacent property owner, or that we exercise the reverter and get the, and let the property be deeded back to the town. Because again, they can't use it. Long story short, the statutes, state statutes don't allow town property to be gifted or given to a private person. It can only be sold to that private person or put into public use, which is, of course, why we put the reverter clause in the deed to start with. It's my recommendation that the council request that the property be, property be deeded back to the town, and then, of course, if the adjacent property owner is interested in using the, the property for what she might need coming up, she can always make an offer and we can, we can sell the property to her.
I recommend you approve your recommendation.
Second.
Councilman Moore made the motion to act on the reverter clause and take the property back. Councilman Smith seconded that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Okay, Councilman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Robertson?
Yes.
Councilman Moy?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
I will say, as of this morning, I believe the adjacent property owner no longer has interest in the lot. However, the town does, it's a buildable lot, we would like to have it back. So thank you.
Is it, is it buildable?
It is.
It's, it's large enough across the front?
According to Planning Department, yes. Brian, correct me if I'm wrong.
You're correct, so as it stands right now, the, the minimum block width is, is 50 feet, and it does, it does list as a 50-foot lot with the, with the required minimum lot square footage. But technically, yes, and then, and obviously, we would, anytime a, a building is proposed on a site, we would require a survey to, to confirm that. But as it stands right now, it appears it would be a viable lot for construction.
I mean, with the setbacks and everything, this lot is, is a lot that a house could be built on.
It would probably be a small house, but I believe, I'm looking at Brian, I believe so.
Yeah, that's right, I mean, and it's in an R6, so you're, you're looking at a small lot by, by design anyway, so a, a small house envelope would be required to fit upon that, that's right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number four, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Highway right-of-way ditch mowing contract.
Okay. Councilman Moore has made the motion to approve the Highway 11 ditch mowing contract.
Second.
Councilman Smith has seconded.
Any discussion? I'd like to ask, how much is the contract?
Travis?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The contract, the total annually will be $37,054, with 20,000, or 21,150 of that being for Highway 11 mowing, and $15,904 of that be for the annual ditch mowing contract, which, remember, we do the ditch mowing twice a year, once in the spring and once in the fall. And Highway 11, we mow approximately 11 times per year.
Ditch mowing was ten thousand dollars twenty years ago.
He, I've heard a lot of compliments on how the highway area looks, so they've been doing a good job of it.
They have.
You can go down to Aiden and see the, go down and see the difference, you're right.
We know where Winterville is, don't we?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Uh, Councilman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Robertson?
Yes.
Councilman Moy?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item number five is the Chapman Street Culvert Replacement Project Engineering Contract Amendment.
Make a motion to approve.
Councilman Moore has made a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Mayor Pro Tim Robertson has seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Councilman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Robertson?
Yes.
Councilman Moy?
Yes, yes.
Councilman Smith say yes.
Okay, item number six, motion carries. Item number six is Chapman Street Culvert Replacement Project, Chatham Civil in Contract and Change Order Number One.
Make a motion to approve.
Councilman Moore made motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Smith seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Councilman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Robertson?
Yes.
Councilman Moy?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
I believe the vote on that was, uh, four to one in favor of approving the change order.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number seven, is the two thousand twenty sanitary sewer pump station rehab project.
This is the award of the engineering contract.
Mayor, Council, this item, uh, as Terry mentioned previously, this is, uh, what we voted on previously for, with the budget was the two thousand eighteen sewer rehab project. I want to briefly give you a rundown of the difference. The two thousand eighteen sewer rehab project that we just voted on for the rate increase, it includes lining and replacing, uh, the sewer mains and replacing a lot of surfaces to, uh, stop water inflow and infiltration into the pipes that are underground. Obviously, you all know that we pay per every, for every gallon of water that we see to CMSD that gets treated, so if we can prevent that water from going to MSD, hopefully we can decrease our, our rates that we're charged from CMSD. That's the twenty eighteen sewer rehab project. The twenty twenty sewer rehab project, it's concentrated on the, the pump station rehab. The four pump stations that we'll be working on are Chapman Street Lift Station, Robinson Heights Lift Station, Church Street Lift Station, and Winterville Crossing Lift Station. The two big items in the project are Chapman Street Lift Station, we're gonna completely replace that lift station. It was built in the nineteen sixties, it's the oldest lift station in town, and being that it's that old, you know, these don't last forever and will need to be replaced. We applied for grant funding and we got half a million dollars in principal forgiveness and the remainder of the project at zero percent interest. The total project is one million, nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred dollars. Again, half a million of that is principal forgiveness, though we would have to pay back one million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand over a twenty-year period at zero percent interest, which is an additional savings if we were to finance the project at two percent of about four hundred and fifty thousand. So total savings by going through this funding agency is almost a million dollars on a two million dollar project. So again, Chapman Street Lift Station will be complac, replaced completely with a brand-new lift station. Robinson Heights will get a new control panel. Winterville Crossing will get a new control panel, and Church Street will get a bar screen to try to, uh, help us out with the situation with rags and debris getting in those pumps, clogging them up, tearing the seals up. Every time we have to rebuild one of those pumps, it's approximately ten thousand dollars, and a new pump is thirty thousand dollars. And we have been spending a lot of time working on those, and that doesn't count the time staff spends pulling the pumps, cleaning them out, sending them off, putting them back in.
A move to approve the project.
Councilman Moore makes motion to approve.
Can I say one more thing, Terry?
Yeah.
I, I just, I do want to make it clear that this project will require us to do another rate, rate increase, not next fiscal year, but likely the, potentially the year after that, but certainly the third year. However, the rate increase is only estimated to be a dot and sixty-one cent governed debt service.
Councilman Moore, you still make your motion to approve?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
I, I made that motion, that's where I spent all my time at the, the substation on, um, Chapman Street.
Right, right.
What about, what about the substation?
They'll replace that substation I spent so much time at, rebuilding those pumps seventy years.
We still spend a lot of time there.
That's, that station was built in the fifties.
Right.
Mr. Snap Darden used to have a store sitting right there nearby.
Yep.
So second, if we didn't have one already, I couldn't remember.
No, we did not, thank you. Oh, Ms. Robertson, I'm so sorry.
And the question is, on it, this is the one that you say we won't have an increase until, what, three years from now, right?
Three years, sixty-one cents.
Potentially year after next, which would be twenty-one, twenty-two, but definitely by the third year if we haven't done it year after next.
Now, how are we funding this one at this time?
Uh, we received-
The what, what he said a few minutes ago?
Correct, yes. The project is one million, nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred dollars, Travis?
Yes, ma'am.
Five hundred of that is principal forgiveness, tantamount to a grant, basically. The remaining balance will be paid over twenty years at zero percent interest, which equates to another about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings, so we will save as a, uh, the way we're funding this project, about a million dollars.
So the, so the increase that we have with the four dollars and twenty-five cents was for the, uh, to, to balance out the budget itself, or for this project here, one? Which one is, I'm, I'm kinda confused.
The, uh-
The increase, the four dollars and twenty-five cents increase. Are you foot all, wait, three dollars and fifty cents, that's right.
Three fifty was for the two thousand eighteen sewer project. This is the twenty twenty sewer project, which would equate a need of one dollar and sixty-one cents in, in an increase, is that right Travis? One sixty-one?
Yes, ma'am. But it would be a couple of years, it would not be-
Correct.
Coming up fiscal year or the next, it would be the-
Third year.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
的第一个come on.
But we can start the project then, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
The debt service does not come on until you complete the project.
Till you complete the project.
It'll be a couple of years before that's done.
That's correct.
Wow.
Do, do we have a motion?
We have a motion and a second.
And a second, that's, I'm sorry. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Councilman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Robertson?
Yes.
Councilman Moy?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Thank you very much, that's the vote, all in favor to approve that pro-
Motion carries.
-engineering contract.
Okay, I believe we took off item number eight.
Correct.
Number nine is the Board of Adjustment Member Appointments.
I like to put items nine, ten, eleven, and twelve together. You take the recommendation of staff, since we have so many people applying to these positions.
Second.
So Councilman Moore's motion was to take nine, ten, eleven, and twelve?
Yes.
And, uh, accept staff's recommendations on all of those items, and Councilman Smith seconded the motion?
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Councilman Hines?
Aye.
Was that an aye?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Robertson?
Yes.
Councilman Moy?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alrighty, moving on. Item number thirteen is updated funding for the Watermelon Festival.
Folks, this is to, to formalize of what I've already recommended. As you all know, the two thousand and twenty Watermelon Festival's been canceled. Uh, that is unfortunate, but we certainly understand the committee's decision. As a result, I have recommended to council that, uh, we allow the committee to keep the fifty thousand dollars in funding that we gave them this year for the two thousand twenty festival, have them apply it for two, two thousand twenty-one, and as, uh, in return, they would not ask for any funding, and I have not included any funding in the budget for twenty twenty-one.
Motion to approve, second.
Second.
Councilman Smith, uh, voted, uh, made the motion to approve. Councilman Moore or Hines, somebody made a motion to second it?
I, I have one question. Uh, the fifty thousand will not be paid, but I would like to say that the next Watermelon Festival, it might skip next year's.
I'm trying to follow what you're saying, Mayor.
Okay, in other words, if I, if I'm correct, the motion was to, the fifty thousand dollars they got, uh, would apply to next year's Watermelon Festival. Suppose there is no festival next year, so-
We'll let that roll over to the third year.
That's what I'm getting at, let it be to, to the first Watermelon Festival occurring after this year.
Okay. Okay?
Okay, all in favor, do, do we need to change that motion or not?
Uh, no. I don't think so.
Okay, alright, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Councilman Hines?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Robertson?
Yes.
Councilman Moy?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number twelve, the first one is temporary rate reduction, this is for the electrical stuff.
That's correct. Uh, you all have enacted a temporary rate reduction of ten percent for the months, uh, uh, May and June, for the usage months, April and May. We discussed coming back and discussing a third month if you all wanted to do that, and we would need to know tonight if you all want to do that.
No, we can't afford it.
It, it would definitely affect the bottom line.
That's right.
We didn't want to be remiss and not bring it up. If I could also, Mayor, just move into item number two, uh, and we've discussed these collectively, I just wanted to remind council that Governor, Governor Cooper extended, uh, his initial executive order prohibiting cities and towns from cut, disconnecting utility customers, uh, and charging late fees for an additional sixty-day period. The initial period was for sixty days, so we will now be, uh, assuming that it ends at the end of the second sixty days, we will be over a span of a hundred and twenty days that we will have to grapple with the balances associated, uh, with that executive order, and that will also affect the bottom line.
Do we need a motion on the first item?
You only need a motion, as far as I'm concerned, if you want to enact a third month's worth of, uh, rate reduction.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure, okay, how about number two?
No, that was just an information.
I think we need to take a vote on the first one.
And the second.
Okay.
What's been made?
Well, there's no vote on this, I'm sorry, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, there's no vote on the second, that's just a reminder that that's in place.
Right, okay.
Okay.
That's the, that's an extension of the executive order, we are under that order.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend it for another month.
Okay, Councilman, Councilman Moy made a motion to, uh, extend the ten percent rate reduction for a third month, which would be, it would take place in July, but it would be for the month, the uses, usage month of June.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second. Discussion.
Where'd the money come from out of the budget?
Well, if, if I may, we've, we've, uh, amended the budget, uh, tonight's, uh, consent agenda, um, and so I feel like with what we've done, um, it, it may, uh, cover that and may not, but, um, you know, after, the, the, the tough thing about budgeting, um, you know, this, even though it'll happen in June, it'll get booked back to, uh, I mean, it'll happen in July to get booked back to June's business, cause it'll be a decision, um, you know, these revenues will be billed out based on June's business, so that gets booked back to this fiscal year. Uh, you know, we, it, it, we, there, we won't know exactly what those numbers are gonna be until, until after the fight, unfortunately, so, uh, as it is with a lot of things in budgeting world, uh, you, you set, it's a educated guess as to, you know, what that number will actually be. But we did, we did reduce revenues in the, uh, budget amendment, that was on the consent agenda tonight. Now, uh, that, um, will probably cover most or, or part of, um, the anticipated loss of revenue, but, but what we're having, uh, if I may for a minute, just tell you what we are having from, you know, a collection standpoint, uh, we're starting to see, um, mo, uh, majority of people are paying, but we are, we are having a situation where, um, certain customers are obviously the ones that are in trouble. Um, we have about seventy as of, uh, Friday that, um, are starting to really stack up some debt, and some of them, uh, in many instances simply just haven't paid, uh, since the beginning of this, and others, um, you know, have paid some, but not, not the whole thing, because they know they're gon, not gonna hit, uh, power disconnected.
Anthony, did I hear you say seventy, seven-zero?
Well, you're not gonna win that money until you can turn it off.
Correct, the receivables are increasing. And- Yes, ma'am, and that, that was correct, it was seventy, that, uh, we, we counted seventy that what we would consider to be, uh, either at a very dangerous level, uh, I would say that's over a thousand dollars in utility bills, or have not paid anything, uh, since the onset, and this, just to remind y'all, I know, I know the governor's executive order, you know, was statewide, but, you know, our town, you know, decided to do this before anything came out from the governor's office, so we're actually a month ahead of other utilities, um, and receivables that are, are building up as a result of, you know, not terminating or disconnecting services.
So as a reminder, the town started our actions along with many other towns about two weeks prior to the executive order coming out from Governor Cooper, which took in basically a billing cycle before the executive order took place, so.
So while the rest of us pay, these folks are getting free services. Has the governor been reimbursed for that when this is all over?
There's nothing, I've not been made aware of any conversation of that.
So some of this federal money that's passed down, the good governor's not gonna make sure that we get what we need to keep paying our bills?
Well, if, if we can get them to pass the HERO Act in Congress, we probably gonna see some money coming back towards the municipalities. That's right now is the holdup, is them can't decide if they're gonna pass the HERO Act, and in the HERO's Act, there is money from municipalities in there. Cause they know that municipalities are struggling.
Well, the thing about it is, if you owe the bill, you're gonna have to pay, or you won't have any utilities eventually. We, I know that it looks like we'll be probably well in the hole by then, but I think that that, uh, most of that money will be recouped in one way or another, um, that we have there, so.
If the governor had not done this, I would agree with you to reduce it, but the governor should not do this again, this he's gonna pay the money himself.
I would say too, um, you know, when we, when we create these payment plans at the end of this, um, whenever it, you know, it's scheduled to end on, you know, July twenty-ninth, but at that point, we're gonna get inundated with payment plans, um, hope, you know, hopefully. And, um, but the, the flip side of that is, you know, one, we'll have payment plan, but two, you know, you're gonna have, they're gonna have to pay their regular bill plus one-sixth of whatever they've accumulated over that one hundred and twenty-three days, which is gonna be a substantial amount, and it's gonna be very difficult for them to overcome, and we've talked to social services because, uh, you know, we- And we've talked to social services because, uh, you know, we're interested in knowing where these people are gonna get help from if, if, if they can, and, you know, they, there are a lot of a certain amount of money, and I believe it's around six hundred dollars per family, um, if, if they qualify for it. And, um, essentially, but we asked them specifically, has any money come down from the federal government or from the state to assist with, uh, additional utility, um, billings? And their answer was none. And so that was the local social, um, social services office.
I'll be honest, I don't think that we can bargain and bank on getting any substantial reimbursement for a lot of these expenses.
Any idea on how many unpaid electric, how much money is involved so far in Winnebago?
There's, there's an, there's an emotion and, uh, there's an emotion on the floor or something.
Yes.
There is a motion and a second to, uh.
Let's call for the question.
I'd like to hear an answer to the mayor's question, if we can get one.
To what?
I'd like to hear an answer to your question.
I believe that, uh, as of, as of Friday, it was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Hundred and twenty-seven thousand right now?
Correct.
Going, going to do another month? Okay. We have a motion and a second to extend it to the third month. If there's no other, any more discussion, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Councilman Hines?
No.
Councilman Moore?
No.
Mayor Per Tim Robertson?
Yes.
Councilman Moy?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Smith?
No.
So I believe, uh, an additional month fails, three to two.
That's what I calculated.
Thank you. That didn't sound right when I said it, but thank you.
Okay. Item number thirteen, uh, any future agendas or work sessions? Okay, I didn't do it in the bike. Item number thirteen, uh, future agendas or work sessions?
I have none, Mayor.
Okay. Item number fourteen, report from department heads. The first one is minimum housing code.
Mayor, in the essence of time, if it's okay with council, I'll just ask that department heads come forward with anything y'all'd like to specifically discuss on this list.
Cemetery, how much does a plot cost at this time here in Winnebago?
We currently don't have any lots for sale, but Anthony, if we did, how many, do you know, can you tell me off the top of your head? How much a lot costs?
Are you talking about a cemetery?
Yes, sir.
Um, it's changed, it changed over time. Uh, I can look it up real quick, I'm sorry. Give me just one sec.
It was five hundred dollars.
Four hundred and fifty dollars is the last number I heard, but we don't have any.
It's a good deal. But I don't remember exactly.
We had had it in, what, three years, four years?
Uh, yeah, at least three years. We've had a, a couple come, people, uh, turned them in and.
Yes.
Didn't want to use them, and, and so we were able to resell a few, but it has not been very many. And, uh, I'm looking at the rate schedule right now, fee schedule. You know, uh, yeah, in town is, is, uh, four fifty, four fifty.
In out of town?
Yeah, we're not, um.
Currently, you have to.
We're not allowed to sell any out of town.
Correct.
The rate, the rate prior to the moratorium was one thousand. If they were in the ETJ, it was six fifty.
And I believe we changed that, you had to either own property or live in town to purchase a cemetery plot, if I recall correctly.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just a note, the road going that's in the cemetery is closed, uh, right now, they are redoing that road to the wa, to the waste.
It needed it.
Have they finished it?
Uh, I'm not sure.
I don't, I'm not sure either. Okay.
Uh, where are we standing at in multi-purpose building?
Uh, currently, I believe that ongoing negotiations continue with respect to the, the current location. We have not uncovered any better location currently. So, uh, actually, I don't know that we've made a lot of inroads during COVID-19, but we'll continue to make those strides and report accordingly.
Okay. Item, the next item is the Tar Road Widening Project.
Mayor, I think folks are just kinda coming forward with anything council wants to hear about specifically, but there won't be reports on, on each item.
Oh, okay.
Due to the time, can we, um, move forward to, um.
Okay.
Go pass announcements, closed tonight, it's been a long night.
Yes, sir. Whatever council would like to do.
I'd like to make a motion, do we adjourn?
Before we adjourn, I just want to thank everybody, uh, for, uh, calls, texts, and, uh, and the prayers. Uh, I really appreciate it. Uh, believe me, people, uh, this stuff, it's no joke. Yeah, it's, it's really not, uh, most of the day to day, I felt like my insides was on a fire. And that's not a good feeling.
Well, we just, just know that we're thinking about your boss man, and we, uh, are here to do anything that you need.
And you said, you gonna bypass the announcement?
We have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I got one question for, uh, Chief Police, is he, is he still on?
Chief Will Hyde is with us.
Uh, what about the Fall Community Events? Could you give us an update, you can just send it to an email, an update on the Fall Police Department events? You don't have to do it now, I wait for it.
Actually, what we'll do is we'll get, uh, an update on events in general to, to council, just to kinda let you know where we stand today. Obviously, those things can change, uh, as time goes by, but I know some of the events that occur in August have been moved out to the fall, we'll be catching you up to speed on that.
Thank you.
And that'd be an announcement, I think it's very important that we announce, you know, three and four, about the town office will be closed July the third, and no town council meeting. I know the flowers have been discussed, but we will not have no town council meeting in the month of July.
I will reiterate, though, if we receive any future, uh, comments after the conclusion of tonight's meeting on either one of our public hearings, we'll be wanting to get together really quickly.
That'll be fine, that'll be great.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Moore.
I need a second on the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilman Hines?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Per Tim Robertson?
Yes.
Councilman Moy?
Yes.
Councilman Smith? Thank you all.